Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. We are pleased to have you with this segment of our evening council agenda, which we call "Our Spotlight on Citizens." And this is already, all the time, a very, very pleasant, worthwhile, and gives you a warm and fuzzy feeling in terms of recognizing all the good things about our community and our citizenry. So, I want to welcome everybody to tonight's citizens' spotlight to recognize those nominees for the 2014 Council's Placemaking Award. As you may recall, the city held its first placemaking award ceremony last year with nine nominees that were recognized. Placemaking is a multifaceted approach to planning with a variety of definitions, but is generally recognized as building places for people that make public space a living space. Placemaking is a process of adding value and meaning to the public realm through community-based revitalization projects rooted in local values, local history, local culture, and the natural environment that we have here in this beautiful place we call Hampton. Placemaking instills civic pride, catalyzes economic development, and inspires an authentic sense of pride. Council's placemaking awards recognize projects that improve the community through revitalization, blight reduction, historic preservation, sensitive infill, and approaches to a high-quality new construction. And this construction contributes to the creation of unique and memorable, the creation of unique and memorable, creation of unique and memorable places to help develop Hampton's identity and our character. This year, there are ten nominations for projects completed in 2014 that we would like to recognize, and we will do so now. Our august leader, Mr. Bruce Stirk, will provide a brief description of the categories as well as information related to each product, each project.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Mayor Wallace, and thank you all members of the audience and nominees for attending here. This year, as the mayor indicated, there are ten nominees in five different categories, with one being nominated in more than one category. The five categories this year were commercial renovation, design excellence, infill project, public placemaking, and placemaking. Before I move on to the recognition of the nominees, I'd also like to thank the Council Placemaking Committee. I know members of the committee are here tonight working with us, and I'd like to just acknowledge them. This year, we also invited members, in addition to the city staff, to join the committee, and I'd like to recognize Ebony Davis from the Coliseum Central Bid, as well as our guest judges, a representative from the Barking Dog, the Point in Phoebus, who were both nominees in last year's placemaking ceremony. And again, thank you to all. We are pleased to recognize the nominees for projects completed, as the mayor said, in 2014, and will announce the top scores in each category. The first category for this evening is the Commercial Renovation Award, Neighborhood Scale. The Commercial Renovation Project serves as the best example of a renovation of an existing commercial structure in terms of attention to design, materials, and sustainability. We would like to recognize the AdVex Corporation at this time, if they would please come forward. This renovation project consisted of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot square addition to the facade improvement. The building is located at the entrance of Langley Research Industrial Park, and the improvements are visible and a welcome sign of all the important development occurring within the park. Thank you very much. The next nominee is the Bassett Building. This building has been transformed with a new roof, replaced windows, and exterior patched and painted. The project enhances the downtown Hampton area with a fresh and beautiful look.
Thank you, thank you.
Next in this category is Wendy's. This nomination received top scores in the Commercial Renovation category. The project consists of raising an existing Wendy's restaurant and rebuilding a new three-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot restaurant. This site is located across from Net Center Development, which is an area of the city that benefits from revitalization. The new site provides additional green space and an updated building design at one of the gateways to the city, and by the way, the food is good there. Would a representative of Wendy's, if you're here in the audience, please come forward? And congratulations to those folks in that category. The next category is the Design Excellence Award. The project that best demonstrates the use of high-quality design to improve a place or create excellent prospects for improvement, whether by improving the local built environment, attracting investment, or raising the overall standard for the design in the community. The first nominee in this category is Mattress Firm. Mattress Firm, the new store in conjunction with the CVS Pharmacy, redeveloped a previously existing commercial use. The developer went above and beyond the minimum zoning standards by locating the building up against North Armistead Avenue and by addressing the appearance of all the sides of the building. Even though the building fronts the internal parking lot, the rear elevation that faces North Armistead includes windows, other facade articulation that gives the building a second front. The site is well-connected with internal sidewalks that connect the store with the pharmacy, as well as new sidewalks. Is there a representative for the Mattress Firm here this evening? Well, congratulations, thank you. Next in this category is Panda Express. This new fast casual restaurant constructed on an out parcel of the Peninsula Town Center Development at the corner of Von Schilling and Coliseum Drive. The new building reflects a more contemporary design with a good blend of contemporary building materials, masonry, metal panels, and trim and glass. The structure fronts Coliseum Drive with the pedestrian connections to the street and sidewalks, and again, I know the food is good there. Is there a representative from Panda Express? Next in this category is Wawa. The new Wawa store redeveloped a previously existing commercial site, although not under the enhanced development controls of zoning, being a gateway to the Coliseum Central Bid District in the Aberdeen Gardens neighborhood, the developer voluntarily agreed to build the higher zoning, build to a higher zoning standard. The building was specifically designed for this site using a mix of upgraded material, and the design standards also resulted in a higher quality lighting, landscaping, and signage. Pedestrian connections between the building and surrounding sidewalks offer great walkability to the adjacent neighborhoods. The developer also recycled most of the materials, for example, crushing concrete and salvaging scrap metals from the existing demolition of existing buildings, and implemented LED lighting for all the site and building lighting. Is there a representative this evening from Wawa? Thank you very much. Next in this category is Old Point National Bank. This project received top scores under this category. Old Point National Bank originally began in Phoebus in 1923 and opened their new corporate headquarters in downtown Hampton in 2014, bringing sixty corporate employees to the new full-scale service branch. The building is over fifty-four thousand square feet, and the style is reminiscent of early 20th-century architecture. The skin of the building is precast with a brick inlay. The sixth floor provides a rooftop meeting room and an outdoor space which provides views of the waterfront and downtown Hampton. I've personally not seen it, but I've heard it's a sight to behold. The materials generated from the demolition of the original downtown branch were recycled. The new building meets many elements of LEED certification, including construction activity pollution prevention, environmental site assessment, fundamental commissioning of the building energy systems, minimum energy performance required, fundamental refrigerant management, storage and collection of recyclables, minimum indoor air quality performance, environmental tobacco smoke control, and minimum acoustical performance. The building is a very fine example of high-quality new investment in the downtown built in an urban form, which brings employees and added street life to the downtown. Congratulations. The next category is the Infill Project Award. The Infill Project serves as the best example of an appropriate new development in a mature, developed area. The first in this category is Steak 'n Shake. Steak 'n Shake is a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant with a retro design, and the attractive reuse of the site is a benefit to the city and the community. The previous development located on this site was a vacant muffler shop with a very large sign. The drive-through lane was designated to wrap the building rather than back up onto Mercury Boulevard during busy times. This layout was very important when the restaurant first opened, serving large crowds for weeks without backing up onto Mercury Boulevard. And again, not to mention, the food's very good. Again, I've been there. Would a representative from Steak 'n Shake please come forward if you're here? Also, under the Infill Project, again, we'd like to call Old Point National Bank to come forward. Congratulations again. The next category is public placemaking. This is a new category this year, as the committee felt there are some city-initiated projects that should get special recognition, those that most clearly demonstrate the positive impact of planning, regeneration, urban design, or economic development work on the physical or environmental quality of a place or places, as well as the economic and/or social well-being of the community. The first one in this category is Bluebird Gap Farm. The relocation of the entrance of the road to Bluebird Gap Farm was constructed to create a safe and efficient access to the farm. The former entrance on Pine Chapel was located just over the interstate overpass, which created a site, a site-distance hazard. The new entrance is located across from the Bass Pro Shop entrance on Pine Chapel Road. The road improvements include a new two-lane asphalt roadway with curb and gutter and improved drainage. The parking lot for the farm was also redesigned and reconstructed. Fifty-five new parking spaces have been added, and the existing parking lot has also been overlaid with asphalt. Landscaping and decorative fencing have been added to create an attractive entrance to the farm. Bluebird Gap Farm is a great place to visit. I know my granddaughter just recently went there. And would representatives of the Bluebird Gap Farm community please come forward? And I think Jim Wilson's here, so Jim, if you want to come forward, and representatives And the next nominee in this category is the North King Street Improvements. This project received top scores in this category. The North King Street corridor was designed and constructed with guidance from the North King Street Master Plan, which was adopted in June 2007. These improvements from Old Fox Hill Road to Little Back River Road included converting the corridor to a four-lane divided roadway with a raised medium, curb and gutter, and continuous multi-use trail. Additional improvements include landscaping and upgraded lighting. These improvements are just one of the many construction phases that will provide a safe and attractive gateway to Langley Air Force Base in downtown Hampton, and what a great improvement it has been. Would representatives from the North King Street Improvement category please come forward? And the final category this evening is the Placemaking Award. Placemaking is the project that most clearly demonstrates the positive impact of planning, regeneration, urban design, or economic development work on the physical or environmental quality of a place or places, as well as the economic and social well-being of the community. And once again, we'd like us that representatives from Old Point National Bank, please come As we conclude the awards ceremony, I'd like to, again, thank and congratulate the nominees and the top awardees. I'd also like to thank the mayor and our city council members, the city manager and the committee members and city staff for helping put this evening's program together. And again, I appreciate your attendance this evening for the Spotlight on Citizens Council's Placemaking Awards, and you're welcome to stick around after the ceremony to talk to folks and congratulate them. Thank you again, and have a very safe evening.
This concludes tonight's ceremony, but you have seen a demonstration here of why we are a three-time All-American City, because of our people, because of our places, and because of all of you. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for making Hampton the best that it possibly can be. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our evening session, the first budget hearing session of the three that will be held. I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Present.
Councilman Hobbs.
Present.
Councilman Moffett.
Present.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Present.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilman Tuck.
Present.
Mayor Wallace.
Here. Councilwoman Schmidt will give our invocation. I'll ask that you remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I invite you to pray. Lord, we come this evening with grateful hearts for the continued improved health of our fellow council member, Chris Snead. This evening, as we prepare for the budget, I ask that you give us wisdom to be good stewards of our finances. I pray our vote will be a reflection of the will that you have for the citizens of Hampton and each and every citizen. Along with this, as this is deemed Earth Day, I ask that we are also faithful stewards of the natural resources you have gifted to us. In all our decisions, I ask that this gift be protected for our enjoyment and the enjoyment of future generations. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have five items on tonight's consent agenda. I'll now ask Madam Clerk to read the protocol and the summary.
The Protocol for the Consent Agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of non-controversial matters before the council which require a vote by the council. Due to their routine nature, typically these items are adopted by one motion without separate discussion. Tonight's consent agenda amends Chapter Nine to clarify processes when outstanding taxes, fees, and liens exist, approves a grant for the 2015 Summer Food Service Program, appropriates funds from the Economic Development Fund to acquire properties in the area of Back River Road and West Queen Street, designates Harmony Information Systems as the sole source for an upgrade to the information system of the Human Services Department, and approves three sets of minutes.
I'll now ask for a motion for items one through five on the consent agenda.
Move for approval of items one through five.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll please.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead.
Aye.
Councilman Tuck.
Aye.
Mayor Wallace.
Aye. We have two items on public hearing tonight on our agenda, four public hearing tonight on our, tonight's agenda. And now I ask the clerk to read the protocol for public hearing, and she will also read the titles for each public hearing item tonight.
Protocol for Public Hearings. The city council takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the council conducts public hearings and how those coming before the council should conduct themselves. Persons wishing to speak to the council are requested to sign in. Speakers' cards are available in the lobby of City Hall one-half hour prior to the meeting. The mayor will call individuals in the order of sign-up. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the council, and speakers may not yield their time to another speaker. Once all the speakers have been heard, the mayor will close the public hearing and solicit discussion and a motion from the council. The first public hearing is item number six, which is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments relative to the fiscal year 2016 budget and proposed taxes and fees, including general operating budget, the general fund, capital improvement fund, solid waste management fund, storm water management fund, wastewater management fund, steam plant fund, fleet services fund, risk management fund, information technology fund, Hampton Coliseum and Arts Fund, Hampton Roads Convention Center Fund, the Hamptons Golf Course Fund, the Woodlands Golf Course Fund, Economic Development Fund, proposed personal property tax rate, no change, proposed real estate tax rate, no change, proposed boat license fee, new, proposed cigarette tax, increase, proposed solid waste fee, increase, and proposed storm water user fee, increase.
I believe the manager will have a brief explanation, and then we'll have, open up, we'll open our public hearing.
Yes, sir, we've done several briefings of the budget to council and the community, both before the budget release and after the budget release. So, tonight's purpose is simply a hearing. You'll see that there are no votes scheduled tonight. That's because, by tradition and in accordance with law, we always have at least one hearing before any votes are scheduled to be taken. So, if people are tuning in and wondering what happens when we conclude the public hearing with no action, that is typical and routine. We will have a second budget hearing next Wednesday. It's a special meeting to keep our budget calendar intact, and after that first, after that second hearing next Wednesday, we will take the first vote on the budget. By tradition, at that time, council typically approves the budget as submitted and reserves all modifications and amendments for the third meeting, which will be on May 13th. That allows the council the opportunity to hear from citizens on two separate occasions before making any amendments to change the budget. So, I just thought that might be helpful in terms of a procedure. And certainly, the staff stands ready, not only to continue to assist council, but to answer any questions that citizens may have. If citizens have questions about the budget, they can either call 311, call my office, or send us an email, and we'll certainly endeavor to get the answers to their questions as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no objections, council members, we'll open the public hearing at this juncture. We have four citizens who have signed to speak to this particular issue, and I'll call your name as the appeal on the sign-up sheet. Ms. Trudy Carney, Mr. Timothy Layton, Mr. Hugh Bassett, and Mr. John Krulis. So, we'll ask you to proceed to the mic in that order, please.
I know I'm number one in your hearts. Good evening, friends. As you know, my name is Trudy Carney, and I reside at 328 Darby Avenue in Hampton. As a citizen, I want to say first that I compliment the Public Works Department on the new signs they have installed around the city. They are very attractive, and I find them to be very informative. But I am here tonight as chairman of the Peninsula Stadium Authority, which is a committee appointed by council to oversee the historic War Memorial Stadium. And I believe that we have two members of our committee here tonight, Ruth Simmons and Jim Wilson, who is the city appointee to our committee. With past assistance from council, a number of improvements have been and continue to be made to the stadium. The authority requests that, as you approve fiscal year 16 budget, please consider additional funding to accommodate ADA requirement standards and restroom improvements. I thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to seeing you at the ballpark. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Did I pronounce that correctly, sir?
You know, you got it right, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Good evening.
It doesn't happen very often. My name is Tim Layton, I am the president of Hampton, Salt Ponds area. I'm also the president of the Long Creek Waterway Association, and I'm here to talk about the potential boat, new word of boat tax, now we're going to call it the Boat Decal Program. Normally, any tax of any type, we would have, as a boater or as the Long Creek Waterway, we would have railed against it, as we have in the past. Of course, it's been demonstrated in the past, and you guys have all supported that, that it would cost, it would be prohibitive to administer, and it wouldn't bring enough money to support the administration of the whole thing, and, more importantly, would drive more boaters away from our waters. However, after I saw the newspaper article about a week and a half ago, I started a few email correspondence with Tom Panalitis, who's here also as part of the membership, and with city manager Bunting about the issue. And then she had a very interesting conversation with a couple of us last night, where she spent a good hour and a half talking about this process. And I actually came away far less in a, on the downside of this program as I thought I would have been. As a matter of fact, I could actually see us supporting it. Based on the conversations that we had, and I think some of you have gotten some briefings on this already, and I just wanted to reiterate, our big concern, and I think all boaters' big concern, would be that any monies that is raised, or are raised, by this program are somehow earmarked for maintenance of the city's navigable waterways. And the word navigable is critical, because if we just say city's waters, that could be some of the marshes up in, near Grandview, or some of the external reaches of Hampton Creek, and that probably wouldn't work too well. So, that's our number-one concern. We'd also like to make sure that we define We'd also like to make sure that we define the, what a permanent boater is vice a transient boater. And we had suggested that 181 days is a good number. Anything over 181 days considered as a resident, not a transient. That will help stimulate more and more transient boaters to stay here for longer periods of time and spend money. We'd also like to make sure the decal fee puts the boat license fee to bed forever. So we don't have to worry about that and have it coming, rearing its ugly head every year or so and have to revisit that. Especially since not all of you are going to be here forever. We'd like to see you here for a long time, but you never know what the next administration or administrations might find where there might be some need for some budget money for something else. And we'd also like to have a program in place to ensure that this decal fee does not have a, is not revisited every year, or even maybe five years. So that that stays in place, so we know long in advance that this is what it's going to cost us in the next five years or so, and it won't cost us anymore. If these items are addressed, and as we discussed with Mrs. Bunting last night, I really think that you will find the support of both Long Creek Waterway and the boaters that reside in the city of Hampton. Thank you very much. Any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Mr. Tuck?
I'd just like to get a clarification of something, please. What will the difference of 180 days versus a longer period, how does that impact the number of transient boaters who might come here?
We actually had a, it was an interesting discussion last night. Myself and Chandler Clark, who was the other representative from Long Creek Waterway who were here, and he actually came up with the number, and it was, it's somewhat arbitrary. We could say a month, two months. But during the summer cruising season for boaters, and a lot of us do that, there is a cruising season of about six months here in Hampton, Southern Chesapeake Bay area. So if we keep it less than six months, or at that six-month period, those people will be considered transient boaters and not permanent. And that was, that was, it's kind of arbitrary. It could be somewhat different. We actually talked about everything, nine months all the way down to three months. Is that?
Any other questions? Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Hugh Basset.
My name is Hugh Basset, and I'm representing the Hampton Citizens Coalition. You probably don't know who we are, but promise me you will. The boat license fee, today at the work session, they said that the boat license fee was going to quiet down the people who were advocating for a boat tax. Sorry to inform you, no, that is not going to happen. We are, our organization voted unanimously to implement a boat tax in the city of Hampton. Your argument that the boat tax is going to run boaters out of Hampton, I don't see. Here's a report on boat taxes in the Hampton Roads area. Chesapeake got a dollar and fifty-eight cent per hundred boat tax. If they're going to run boats out, then how, why are those people still in Chesapeake? They'd have been gone. Newport News got a dollar per 100. And I don't see any boats leaving the marina. So that argument that you have about it's going to run people out here, I think that's felicitous. The budget talks about a one-cent increase in the personal property tax will raise 85,000. Just for arguments, say, let's say you taxed that boat the same way you tax in my car at $4.50. That's run over 30 million dollars. And we're not saying that, that $4.50 like a car would be outrageous. But we would still believe that this city should implement a boat tax. It would go a long way to balancing the budget and paying for things. If you're going to tax my car, it's a matter of equity. You're going to tax my car, but you're not going to tax a boat, but both of those are personal property. And RVs, I can't for the life, what do you think, if you tax RVs, they're going to pack up and leave town? You definitely don't have an argument for RVs. The boat tax, you got an argument. I don't agree with it. But for RVs, I mean, I got a 2,000 Chrysler parked out there that might not even start. And you're going to tax me, but a person with a RV, you're not going to tax them. You taxing my dog, I got to get a license for him. You taxing my scooter, I'm going to fall off and break my neck one day. You taxing that. But we still want a boat tax, and we're going to try to get some people up there where one day that's going to give it to us. We know you're not going to do it, but hopefully, we can get some new people up there that's one day they're going to come around. Hopefully, I'll be here to see it. Under the master plans, we have some questions about $3 million for hotels and retail businesses. I taught capitalism, I taught economics for 30 years, and I thought that capitalism and government was separate. So why are we subsidizing a hotel? You got on a hotel, then you should pay for it. No reaching my pocket for it. Downtown redevelopment is a, 1.2 million, and the budget doesn't exactly say what you plan to do. And you only don't, got 410,000 for neighborhood support. There are another group that you should tax, get rid of their tax. Like you tried to get rid of the senior citizens deferral. And that's that farm tax. You got 10 people who are, who don't, are paying their fair share. One last thing, because I see my little three minutes is up. The 3% payroll tax, we support that, but we don't support it for the people at the top. We got a city manager that makes more than a governor, okay? The city attorney back then was making 173,000 dollars. So I like Pete Peterson, but I think he's overpaid. So if you want to tax people, we saying tax the people at the bottom, not at the top. I don't even imagine. But anyway, I like to know the rationale behind the RV.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Mr. Krulis?
My name is John Krulis.
You got a limp in your stride. You all right?
Pardon?
I see you got a limp in your stride.
Yeah, that's why I've not been around here for a while.
Okay. Well, good evening.
I was kind of concerned that Mr. Basset was kind of getting slow in his, his old age. Not as slow as me, but he's back in shape. Yeah, John Krulis, 3631 Chesapeake Avenue. I haven't been able to come for quite some long time. So I want to finish saying something about the New Market Creek project. I've already said that, that you've, you've already committed to it because of all the money you've already spent. And by my calculations, and I'll be happy to show you every last one of these figures, you've already spent 5 million. You've purchased $4 million in absolute real estate purchases, and you spent another million in the demolition of all of those properties. Better than a thousand, better than a dozen homes, individual homes, and the green hall, greenhouse, or whatever mansion. That, that's easily 5 million dollars you have already spent before putting another, whatever. My real concern, though, is on this, both of these ends. If it were just this project on the middle part, number two, or whatever you want to call it, fine. But number one and number three, I think, are hugely problematic. If nothing else, then for the fact that you're going to be going over two major pieces of highway. You're going to call that a trail when you're going to be crossing Pine Chapel to go to Bass Pro? What sense does that make? And wait till you see what it is that, have you seen a picture of what it's going to look like on Pine Chapel? Do you really know? Do you have in your mind what it's going to look like, what you spent that money for, and what it will accomplish? I hope you understand what it is that you're going to be given there. And the other end on those, those wetlands, do you know for sure that you got everybody's okay from the Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera? Is that all right with everybody? I don't know. But crossing Armistead Avenue is a part of a trail? I don't know. I find it very, very problematic. If there's any kind of a model for what this, all this trail is going to be, I want you to go take a look. You can see it from the window, probably. The park under the interstate, a million and a half dollars. Multiply that by 10, and you'll see what it is. That, that is the most useless piece ever. Ask Mr. Wilson how many people have used that place. You know who uses it? The seagulls. They drop clams on the, on the dock out there. That dock has never seen a kayak ever. And let me tell you, 25 years ago, you couldn't get me out of a kayak. I was the first kayak ever here. I lived out there on the water for, for days on end. I would go from here down to Norfolk and down the Elizabeth River. I'd go out into the ocean. I'd go everywhere on a kayak. I lived on it. These things that you're proposing are not really, really, really up to snuff. That thing down there under the park under the interstate is perfectly, totally, and completely useless. Has anybody ever seen anybody use it? If you ask the people who live in the neighborhood, they will tell you they don't allow their children in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That ends the people, the list of individuals who have signed to speak up on this particular item. Are there any public comments at this juncture? Okay, then I'll close public hearing on item six, and we'll move to item seven.
Item number seven is a public hearing on an ordinance granting a franchise to Loomis Networks, Inc., the grantee, for the term and upon the conditions herein stated to occupy and use the public streets and public alleys in the city of Hampton, Virginia, the city, to install, maintain, upgrade, repair, and remove cable, optical fibers, wires, electrical conductors, conduits, subways, manholes, and other equipment and fixtures of a telecommunications system and the corporate limits of the city of Hampton, Virginia.
I think we have a staff presentation.
Yes, Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer Lynn Osbrook will do the presentation.
Okay. Good evening, members of council. The ordinance before you tonight is to give a franchise agreement to Loomis Networks. They're going to be expanding through the city of Hampton with a fiber plant, and this agreement will cover all the terms of that. It does give the city the ability to have six dark fibers in that plant if they're ever needed for city use. And they will be issued right-of-way permits that will control their work in the right-of-way. And representatives from Loomis here tonight, if anybody has any questions from them. And you've done similar ordinances in recent months for other providers, so this is the exact same terms as the other ones.
Any other comment?
Nope. This is pretty straightforward in terms of, as Mr. Osbrook said, the other types of agreements that we do when folks need to get in our city right-aways.
Question?
Mayor, you know, reading through this, I mean, I know I've seen these before, the public right-aways, and it doesn't say anything about total expense for repairs of streets and such. I mean, I'm taken for granted that it's at no expense to Hampton.
That's correct. They're under right-of-way permit.
Right.
With the bond insurance.
Right.
So they have to restore anything that's damaged or whatever to get that permit closed out.
It reads to, it talks about the removal, trimming trees and such. You know, if there's a grand old tree, do you make them go around, or do you allow them to cut it down?
They will present to us what they plan to do, and that right-of-way permit will control that. So we'll work with the applicant when those permits come through.
And what is your normal stance on that?
They need to do it environmentally and be sensitive. And they're working within the right-of-way, so we control that.
So you can actually make them go around? I mean, I know it would cause a longer distance, but do you make them go around a tree, or do you allow them to cut it down?
For today's technology, for directional boring and going underground, you may not have to dig a trench to go through it.
Okay.
So there are ways to get there, rather than opening up a trench or whatever, that would, you know, bypass things or go deeper.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move for approval of item number seven.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Aye.
Councilman Tuck.
Aye.
Mayor Wallace.
Aye. Are there any comments relative to regional issues or new business issues by a council member? Okay. Any additional reports by the manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I'd like to ask the clerk to read the protocol for public comment period.
The Protocol for the Public Comment Period. The purpose of city council meetings is to conduct the city's business. It is not a public forum in which people can speak on any matter. However, the city council allows for public comment at the end of the regular business meeting, limited to matters on which the council has the power and authority to act. You may sign up to speak in the lobby of City Hall one half hour prior to the meeting and until 7:00 PM. The mayor will call you to speak in the order of sign up. Each speaker is limited to one card, and each individual will have three minutes to speak. To save time, it is requested that speakers alternate between the podium and the freestanding microphone. If Speaker Number One is speaking from the podium, Speaker Number Two may proceed to the freestanding mic and so on. All comments shall be directed to council, and speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the council with decorum on issues or topics which the city council has the power to address. Speakers should refrain, however, from personal attacks when making such comments. Speakers should also refrain from using the public comment period for making political campaign speeches. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. It is the council's practice to listen to speakers and not engage in dialogue. After all of the speakers have been heard, the city manager, city attorney, and/or members of city council may respond as appropriate. Please note that you will be directed to leave the podium for failure to comply with this protocol after fair warning from the presiding officer. Failure to comply with such directive may result in removal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers that have signed the document for the public comment period. I'd like for, to call their names, and they proceed to the mic as they have been listed on the sign up sheet. The first one is Ms. Joyce Beggs, and the second one is Mr. John Krulis.
Hello, council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, mayor. It's my pleasure to be here. I am a proud farmer. I've been farming in Thevis on the land of the contraband slaves and taking care of Shepherd Mallory's plants for almost 19 years now. I've been trying to save the only house left from the contraband slaves, which is connected to that property, which is on 312 South Fullland Avenue, by a contraband slave by the name of Mr. Keppatrick. Shepherd Mallory gave him that land. Well, first of all, I wanted to talk to you about Shepherd Mallory. If he went to college, he would have been a field biologist. He used the secrets of the Native Americans to feed the new people who built their camps in the Thevis area. I am so thankful that you are looking at the camp and you're actually doing what needed to been done a long time ago with the camp that was ran by Townsend. He was one of the, there was three contraband slave camps, and there is a third one. I don't know where it's at. It could be Foxhew. I don't know. But Shepherd Mallory was pretty much given the Thevis area. And as the people came, as my great-great-grandfather, they absolutely built a community, and it was called Chesapeake City. And yeah, I, for, for probably 10 years, of the 20 years I've been here, looking for my great-grandfather history, I did knock on doors, and I scared people. But now, since they know that it's my, my great-grandfather who wrote letters to my family that the Chesapeake Bay was a healing source to his soul, saving this property is everything to me. And every time I work very hard as a farmer protecting these plants, it's, it's, it's a magnificent feeling. Because they was professional farmers. They actually traded. They did pretty well. They just had a black Friday with their banks that was not protected. But anyway, since everyone is learning to understand my mission, my farm is constantly attacked. I don't know why. As a female farmer, I work very hard. I take care of 6,000 plants. I sell my seeds all over the world just to let them know about the contraband slaves. I work very hard with Indian reservations, especially the Hawaiians, who's still holding on to their secrets. Because they build, the cockabell fell through in Congress. They just want to be claimed as Native Americans. Native Americans gave the contraband slaves gold, and that gold is learning how to farm very close to the Chesapeake Bay. I take care of the grape vine that the Kepatricks gave Shepherd Mallory for a part of his property. I know these records have been lost, but only thing I asking you as a council to look into my matter and save this home. It's the last home that was built by a contraband slave. Even the first Keppatrick, yes, he did want to build Shepherd Mallory a very stable home, but he was very happy to just be on Downstreet where I farm. You can look straight at Fort Monroe. That's all he wanted in life. So to protect the Native American secrets, I need your help. I've been working for 20 years. Yeah, I've gone to the Supreme Court, and when they turned down my case over my house, I took a code class to learn how to fix it. Because that is my mission. These people was very intelligent, and I think the world need to know. And it's a good feeling coming here and, and especially with the, with the bank in Thevis. Phoebus, that's where their shot was. It took me 10 years to find out where did they meet. The Native Americans, they taught them how to farm. They taught them things that they needed to survive. And even George Washington Carver kept the secrets of the Native Americans. Now, my...
We're going to have, have to ask you to come to a conclusion.
Okay.
I, I believe the manager's, manager is going to take some action, and she can tell you as soon as I get off the mic what she can do to help you with, with your mission and how to make it materialize.
All right, well, thank you, and it's good to see that the community is still a loving community, because I am receiving the same love that my great-grandfather received in Phoebus. Thank you.
Ms. Beggs?
Laura Fitzpatrick over here in the second row is one of my assistant city managers. She works on our historical matters. I, obviously, we can't commit to anything tonight, but she'll be glad to sit down and understand the issue and apprise us all, okay?
Mr. Krulas?
I know it would be against the rules, I now realize, but I'd love to give that lady my three minutes. Isn't that beautiful? Absolutely beautiful. Thank you, thank you. I don't know what to say. The only thing I want to say is about a month or so ago, I had a persistent problem with the sewer coming up in my shower, and I called a plumber person that I knew, and, and he, rather than coming out, he said, "Call 311." 311. I tell people to call 311 for a lot of things, but I didn't know about the sewer. And sure enough, that's exactly what you're supposed to do. And they absolutely came, and they did. And I've had a recurrence of it, and they were out there again this past week, and, and I got to tell you, going in people's sewer lines is not a pretty job. So when you talk about giving that pay increase, I am 100% in favor of that, absolutely. However, like Mr. Bassett said, there are an awful lot of corner offices in this building, are there not? A lot of corner offices. It's not just one, it's a lot of corner offices. And those folks that go into our sewers, they, they deserve every single penny of it, but I'm not so sure about the rest. But that lady, that's absolutely, oh, and by the, her purse is here. Is she, is she outside? Oh, okay.
She's with the ACM conversing.
Okay, that is, that's, that's, that's Hampton at its absolute finest. That really is. Oh, and, and I, and I do want to thank the, the city manager. I, I've had trouble with my phone business recently here, but I called in response to something about the, the waste management or the solid waste not having gone into effect for, for those who had exemptions, and it was reinstated, but it's not been reinstated, and I appreciate your taking care of it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. This ends the list of individuals that have signed up for public comment. Madam councilmembers, madam and mister councilmembers, are there any items of new business you'd like to surface at this juncture? Madam Vice Mayor?
I, I don't know that I would call this new business, but I would say that Councilwoman Schmidt mentioned Earth Day when she gave her invocation, which was very nice. And it is Earth Day today, and so there's two things that I want to mention. One is that the master gardeners are, are going to be participating in a plant sale at a Bluebird Gap Farm on May 2nd. And as was communicated to me, good plants and good prices come early. So, and Bluebird Gap Farm, if you haven't been there recently, is just an absolutely fabulous place. The manager and the mayor and I went out there earlier this week to look at something, and I had not been out there since the new parking lot was put in, and actually, I hadn't been in there, there in a while, because my grandchildren have gotten older, then they want to go and run around with the animals. But it was, it was really wonderful, and it's a really wonderful place. The other thing I wanted to mention was an article that was in the Daily Press this morning, and to congratulate the Clean City Commission and Edward Shawn Robinson, who just happens to be here tonight. I don't know why he chose to come tonight, because I would have said this anyway, but he has started, he, he is a grad, he is a senior at Hampton University, and he is the vice chair, is that right, of the Clean City Commission? And he has come up with a program called Change, Community Helps All New Growth Emerge, and it is an anti-litter campaign that is aimed at young people. And the way that he is particularly appealing to young people is that there are scholarships available for those who participate in this program, which I think is very important for all of our young folks. He's a veteran, and he also was one of our, a participant in our summer youth employment program last summer. And so that's really where I first met him, but I've always been very impressed with him. And when I saw that today, I really thought that since this is Earth Day, that was really worth a mention. Hampton is full of people who are collaborators, co-creators, and Edward Shawn Robinson is certainly one of them, and so we really appreciate your efforts. You're, you know, a great citizen of this city, and we really are grateful for everything you do, so thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I know we are wrapping up, but when Vice Mayor Curtis mentioned the word "co-collaborator," I was reminded that today is the official sign-up day for our Slide the City event. For those of you who have not heard about Slide of the City, it is a big water slide à la the old slip-and-slides with water. You actually get an inner tube, and you go down, and it's a very long slide. And in Hampton's case, it's going to start at the top of the Booker T. Washington Memorial Bridge. Some people call the Settlers Landing Bridge, but I'm honoring by its historical name. And they'll go all the way down Settlers Landing Road. And this is an event that one of our co-collaborators in downtown, Carla Bland, actually worked very, very hard to get to come to the city. This is an event that will likely attract on the order of 5,000 to 6,000 people to downtown on that particular day. As you can imagine, there are not many opportunities to get on a big slip-and-slide down a historical bridge through a beautiful downtown. And when you said "co-collaborator," I thought it was very appropriate to both, A, recognize Carla Bland, but B, tell people that if you want to sign up, these events can sell out. And last we heard, they had about 5,000 people on the waiting list to sign up, and tickets went on sale today. So if you have an interest in going down an inner tube on a waterside on a beautiful day in June, I believe it's June 21st, is that right?
No, June 20th.
20th, 20th, June 20th, you might want to go to Slide the City, put that in your internet browser, and it will pull it up and get your tickets.
Anything else?
I, I need to mention, one of the questions that came up this week on, on my chat in reference to the, the Slide the City was, okay, what happens to the water? And is it, does it get polluted, and how pure is it if I slide down the slide? And we're informed that they have a methodology of cleansing the water as it comes down the hill, as it gets to the bottom of the hill, they recirculate it and cleanse it, and then pump it back up. So once you slide down, you're sliding down on, on clean water. And the other thing is that it's cleaned after the event is over, and the water is donated to the city for purposes that they, they may need it. So the Department of Public can carry it and water some of our plants and the medians and those kinds of things. So there's no waste, and there's no pollution that, that occurs from that particular event. The other thing I, I need to mention, and Catherine, I think I'm correcting this, this week is National Secretaries Administration Professionals Week. So, so those of you who weren't aware, and you may be sleeping it or something, I wanted to raise your level of consciousness that you got a couple more days to get, get it in. So do what you need to do for those people that ably assist us and make us all look good, and we stand on their shoulders, and they constantly tell us, "Well, you aren't heavy." So remember those individuals. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
May I have one minute, please?
50 cents, yes.
A quarter. I would just like to say that Hampton continued our tradition today of hosting Scout Youth and Government Day. And usually, we have some of the young people come back at night to tell you about their experience, but I think we wore them out today. We taught them about city budgeting. It was 15 Boy Scouts, 15 Girl Scouts of middle school and high school age, and they spent the morning with us learning about the difficult decisions that elected officials have to make in connection with how to spend money. And some of them were surprised by becoming electeds who had to make the decisions, while the other ones became citizens advocates either for or against a variety of fictitious projects that we came up with. And we kind of did it, followed the TV Shark Tank model, where you had two minutes to make your pitch. They were a great group of young people. It makes me even more optimistic for Hampton's future. They were engaged, they voted yes on some good projects, they voted no on some bad ones, and they even decided to save some money for the next budget year, which was something they came up with on their own, and it shows just, just how intelligent and wonderful Hampton's young people are. They spent the afternoon visiting a variety of historic sites, and we turned that into Hampton's amazing race. So we are in good hands for the future. At least, we've got 30 good ones that we think have, have seen the love that we have for our young people, and they're giving it back to us for the future.
So I want to note that our future's in good hands, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting is adjourned.